O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
President, one missing, we do have a quorum. Chief Kaluzny, will you kick off our very special ceremony we have going tonight?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is one of the proudest moments in a chief's position is either to be able to announce somebody's retirement or to announce a hiring of a member of the department. I'd like to start off by welcoming you and introducing you to one of our newest officers, and that's Officer Mitchell Agents. Mitchell grew up in Clin Township, and he is one of seven siblings and is a brother of one of our officers, Matthew Agents. Mitchell enjoys playing baseball, martial arts, boxing, spending time with his husky dog, and also spending time with his fiancee Heidi. Mitchell made the sacrifice to go ahead and put himself and sponsor himself through the police department. And Mitchell's path towards Utica Police really can be credited towards his brother Matthew, who obviously had some good positive things to say, or else he wouldn't be here as an officer here. One of the things that really resonated and stands to the character of both Agents' brothers is when I was initially looking to hire Mitchell, Matt approached me and I spoke to him about, you know, having a brother work side by side with him, and if this is something smart. And Matt told me that his brother needs to do this on his own, and if he's worthy to work here, then he'll go ahead and earn that spot. And that really tells of the character of both the Agents' brothers here. I can say that one of the hardest critics really at a department is its own police officers. And I've had multiple officers come up to me from their initial dealings with Mitchell, coming up and saying what a great hire Mitchell is and a wonderful addition to this police department. Mitchell graduated from the Macomb Police Academy on December 18th of this year and actually began field training just shortly after that. Mitchell is joined here with his brother Matthew and his fiancee Heidi. Please help me welcome Mitchell Agents to the noble profession of law enforcement and a member of the Utica Police Department. Please.
And today is law enforcement appreciation day, so it's the perfect day to do this. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
The Charter.
The Charter.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think you're getting honored. Be careful. Our insurance, you know. Costs are rising. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Your team's all set up. Happy to have you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
You found your flashlight. I see you found it. Didn't you find it?
No, not me.
All right, Mayor and Council. Next, I have the honor to present and introduce you to our next police officer, and that's Officer Elizabeth D'Amico. Liz started the department as a part-time dispatcher back in October of 2022. And I can remember from initially talking to her, I knew instantly that this is somebody that we need to try and push towards that full-time position because we really need to save her as an employee. She just came out of the gate and is one of those people that is truly just a genuinely nice person, gets along with everybody, and just has a way to make the department and the area just that much more pleasant. I had conversations with Liz about what her future was and if she wanted to stay as a police officer, and she expressed that she had always wanted to be a police officer, and if given the opportunity, then this is something that she would talk with her family and decide that this is something for her. After having numerous talks with her husband here, she was able to convince him that yes, this is the path that she wants to take, and she wants to be a police officer for the Utica Police Department. I was honored to be able to sponsor and send Liz to the academy, and I can tell you I received nothing but great things from the Director of the Academy. We would get instant, or we'd get weekly reports back from the Director, and everyone just continually said what a pleasure it was to have Liz as a member of the academy. Liz comes from a proud family of law enforcement professionals. Liz is joined here tonight with her parents Bruce and Kathy, and Liz's father Bruce over there retired as a Sterling Heights Lieutenant back in 2007. Liz's husband Scott over here is also a police officer with the City of Sterling Heights. Liz and Scott have two children together, Blake and Scotland, and in her free time, Liz enjoys playing softball and going to the gym. Please help me welcome Liz to noble professional law enforcement and a member of this police department.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The Charter for the City of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the City of Utica.
For the City of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Well, Steve, Liz was a little bit smarter, she's got the bell curve.
Thank you, sir. Sir.
Happy to have you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Obviously, you're probably after the celebration. At this time, we open up the floor for comments from the public for any items that are listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak will be awarded three minutes to address counsel. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Again, that's for items on the agenda. There'll be another period towards the end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda. As there's no one that would like to address counsel, we'll move on with the agenda. I'd be looking for a motion to approve all items under consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Deion, any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Unfinished business, we have the Sixth Amendment to the ground lease for GS Entertainment. Ms. Schmidt, if you could give us your name and address. Down at Jimmy John's, please.
Hi, Dana Schmidt, 7171 Auburn Road, president of the United Shore Professional Baseball League in Jimmy John's Field. Back before counsel to ask for approval of the Sixth Amendment to the ground lease, which is a revised version of this amendment from what we asked for at the December council meeting. This revision is for a one-year extension. There would be a $30,000 payment in exchange for an extension through the end of this year. We have, last week, had a meeting with the Planning Commission, or attended the Planning Commission meeting to preview a new concept for a multi-use building that we are hopefully trying to get on the Planning Commission agenda for site plan, submit our site plan application to seek approval by the February meeting. We're working hard to try to pull it all together, but that meeting went pretty well, I think. Just getting feedback on the concept for the building, which is going to have retail, 1,000 square feet of retail in the front of the building, still our headquarters office in the middle part of the building, and 1,500 square feet of meeting space at the backside of the building, along with a more than 1,800 square feet of covered patio space along the hike and bike trail and overseeing the river that would be used by the retail space, which is going to include a hot dog restaurant called JJ's Dog House, so, you know, named after the bat dog. So we're pretty excited about it and think that that will be a great venue for people to stop and get hot dog fries. We're gonna have milkshakes and malts, and, you know, adding sides that can be pulled down from that awning in the colder weather months with some heaters so that we can enjoy that space as much year-round as possible. And so we're excited about this revised concept and working hard on getting everything pulled together to go forward with the site plan application at the next Planning Commission meeting. So we are asking for a one-year extension of the time to build this development.
We'd be looking for a motion to approve the one-year extension.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell.
Yeah.
Any discussion from counsel? I'd like to say I'm super excited about this new concept. I think the conference center, as you know, I've been pushing that all along. I think it's going to bring a lot of new faces into the city, and it'll be our job to keep them in the city after they're done with their meetings and conferences at your facility. I'm also liking the hot dog thing. As you know, I even sent you a potential theme song last night. So, great job, Dana, and we appreciate all the hard work and coming up with a concept that's gonna be great for the city, so thank you.
Thank you. We're excited. Sometimes it just takes time to think of the right thing, so we're excited about it as well.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
No, I was also at the planning meeting, and I was very excited, and I'm like, wow, this is great. You know, I like the conference center. I'm, I think the hot dog, the hot dog, it's not a stand, the hot dog building.
Restaurant.
Is great, is going to be on the riverfront, so people that are on their bikes in the summer, you know, they can stop by and grab a hot dog. And when the riverfront first went up, when I was brand-new on counsel, there was something that was going through my head about ice cream. So when you said to have a malt, you know, having shakes and malt, that's perfect. I think it's really going to enhance our riverwalk as well, so I'm excited. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this on par with La Puma's, right?
Yes, that, we're kind of modeling it after La Puma's or Dog Central in Mount Pleasant, so.
Cool. Yeah, about 20, was it 20 or so?
Yeah, we have a.
And that's all tentative, but.
Right, we had a draft menu that we showed at the Planning Commission meeting, but yeah, it's gonna be, you know, Conies, Chicago Dogs, different hot dogs from different regions of the country with, and not the ballpark hot dogs, real, you know, different snap hot dogs. So, but, you know, gourmet kind of boutique hot dog stand, but something that everybody, there'll be something for everyone. Including the red hot hot dog that Gus told us about.
I do have one question. Are you anticipating any other retail besides your own store?
Not right now. That, that's something that we've kind of wanted to have. If somebody came along and wanted, I mean, that's only gonna be of that 1,000 square feet, that's only about 400 square feet of it. So it's not that big, but we did have some, maybe an inquiry from Genesis Credit Union about having something there, and that I am gonna show them the drawings and see if they think anything about it, and then I would have to bring that back, but I'll do that before we go to the Planning Commission meeting and take their temperature. But right now, you know, the design, we're designing it for that to be our retail space. We're gonna have retail for JJ's Dog House, too, because we're already planning to do t-shirts and hats, so. You know, we want it to become an institution, that would be the goal, right? So, kind of like La Puma's is in Rochester, and so, yeah, we're excited about it.
Me, too.
Any further discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We're excited. Thank you, Dana. We have no correspondence tonight. Under new business, we have our fiscal year 2023 auditor's report, and a representative from Yo and Yo is here tonight. If you could give us your name, sir.
Absolutely. Everybody, thanks for having me. My name's Kellen Riker. I'm a manager at Yo and Yo. So everybody should have a PowerPoint I printed out for them, kind of gives a nice little summary. But first off, I'd like to thank Phil and his team. They're always prepared, and you guys are always so welcoming to us when we're here, so I always like to say I appreciate it. All right, so the first slide here is the audit opinion. The purpose of an audit, there's about three sections of it, I'd say, the financial portion, the compliance portion, and possibly a federal portion. And we do all these portions of the audit to be able to express an opinion on your financial statements. This year, the opinion was an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance you can have. And with the audit, management has responsibilities, and I have responsibilities as an auditor. It's management's responsibilities to prepare the financial data fairly and give it to us fairly as well. And then it's our responsibility to take that financial information. We do our audit procedures on those to be able to express that opinion, which, again, this year was unmodified. The next two slides are kind of summary of the numbers. The first one's the balance sheet, it's what we hold, and it's what we owe. I just kind of like to point out some of the larger numbers here. You'll see in the general fund, we have about $1.37 million in receivables, and that's from last year's, last year's Gatsby. We had to do a new accounting standard where we had to record our lease receivables on the books. So it's all of our leases for, I believe, it's cell phone towers and some other areas. And we actually have a corresponding deferred inflow of resources down there near the bottom for $1.3 million. So they kind of cancel each other out, but that's all the money that we anticipate receiving in the future. Another one I'd like to point out is we have $357,000 due from other funds and governmental units. A lot of that's gonna be our state shared revenue. And the most important thing is our fund balance near the bottom. If you can see along, you know, the general fund, our major streets fund, and our non-major governmental funds, we have a very healthy fund balance. General fund has about $4.1 million of our unassigned fund balance. We like to see that. Next slide here goes is our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Just gives you the totals of revenues and expenditures between our two major funds, our general fund and major streets, and our non-major governmental funds. You like to see that that net change in fund balance is a positive number. We can see our non-major governmental funds is a negative. That stems from the local streets fund, which we just spent more than we brought in because of some projects going on. And the next slides here are gonna be some graphs. I'm a big visual person, so the graphs help me out. The first one's our general fund total revenues, expenditures, and fund balance, and it shows like a five-year trend. If you look at that last bar, that's gonna be our fund balance, and you can see it's correlating upwards, you know? The last five years, we have a nice straight line, which means we're adding the fund balance every year. It's what we want to do. We want to have a good fund balance for those times coming up, you know, that are unanticipated, where we need to spend those funds, or there's certain projects coming up we want to spend those on. If you'll see in 2023, we actually have a very big gap between our revenues and our expenses, and that's us recognizing our ARPA funds this year as revenue, which offsets our expenses, so that's why it's so large this year. The next slide here is our general fund revenues detail. This takes all of our revenues in the general fund and splits it up into our five major categories. You can see our major one is taxes, pretty consistent with last year. You can see we're down a little bit. You might ask yourself taxable values probably went up, why are we down? This year, or last year was our last year of the debt millage, so we collected no funds this year for the debt. So although taxable values were up, you know, we just saw just a tiny bit of a dip. I think it was about only $10,000, so. And then the second major difference here is intergovernmental. You'll see that there was a big increase this year, and we received that enhancement grant from the state, so that's what that difference is. The next slide is the general fund expenditures detail. You know, this just, again, takes our expenses and dumps it into our five different categories. Just like any city our size with our operations, we see a lot in our public safety. We have our fire and our police, you know? We're protecting the citizens, so we always see that up there. And then all of our other ones are pretty much right where I expect you to be as well, and you can see they're pretty consistent. The next slide is water and sewer funds, total revenues, expenses, and net position. Again, this shows a five-year trend of all four of those. It's our total revenues, our total expenses, and the net position's broken up into three pieces. Net investment in capital assets, so that's what we value our capital assets at. Restricted portion of net assets, so that's what we have set aside to pay our debt down, and then our unrestricted portion. Again, you can see a nice upward trend here of that unrestricted portion. I like to point out from '22 to '23, there is a $500,000 increase, or I guess it's a decrease of our unrestricted deficit. So that's actually only back down to $453,000, which is really good. And I believe this is the last slide here, is the governance letter. This kind of goes over our required communications to you about some of our other findings in the audit and just some general information about that. So the planned timing and scope of the audit, we always have to submit our audit and our results to the state and federal government within six months of year-end, which we did again this year. Some of the qualitative aspects of the accounting practices, our significant estimates, we always have to communicate these, and it's just something that the values are an estimate by management. The first one is the useful lives of our capital assets, you know, we estimate what those are gonna be. Our second one is a big one, our net pension and OPEB liability that's on the books, and then we also have our allowance for doubtful accounts, what we expect not to collect. Identified risks, we have management override of controls that we test for, make sure that all of the controls are in place to make sure nothing goes wrong. We also have improper revenue recognition. We test this as well to make sure all of our revenue is recognized correctly. This year was an implementation of a new accounting standard, which I'll go over next. And the last one, we tested this year. We always do something unpredictable. We want to make sure, you know, our controls are in place and we have everything buttoned up tight. And we looked at our information technology controls, because that's, cybersecurity's a big thing these days. And then the accounting standards that we implemented this year was subscription-based information technology arrangements, and it's similar to the leases last year, but we had no arrangements that met that. So we implemented it, but there was no change to the financial numbers. We had no uncorrected misstatements this year, that's perfect. We just had a couple management recommendations, both stem from our bank reconciliations. First one is just performing them more timely. We do recommend that we do our bank reconciliations and review them within two months of year-end, and also to follow up on older reconciling items. There's just some items out there that were more than about six months old that we just recommend following up on and clearing out. And that is it for me. Did anybody have any questions?
I don't know if you could hear it from where you're at, but I heard a sigh of relief from counsel when you did the water and sewer fund slide.
I know that, do you like that slide? I remember from last year. So, yeah, it's another good upward trend, so, yeah.
That one's been a source of pain for us for many years, so we're making, I think the city's making great progress on that, and we're gonna keep going, so.
Definitely.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do we have a anticipated zero balance for that deficit, maybe by next year or next two years?
It's a quick question for me. So, so if it trended like this last year, then yes, if you had another $5,000 add to fund balance, then yes, it would. But it just also is indicative of our expenses and our revenues we bring in, right? If our usage is down, so our revenues are down, we might not make that. If we have, you know, a pump station go down that we need to repair, you know, that's a major repair that's gonna fluctuate, too. I think just seeing that upward trend is great, right? So you don't, might not want to shoot all the way for it, you know, but just seeing, still seeing just that increase to it is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good job, thank you.
Good job.
No problem. I thank you again for having me. I will always love coming out here and love, love talking to Phil and the team, so I always appreciate it.
Next year, you can buy a hot dog.
There we go. I would love that. Just walk right down there, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
See you, Dana.
Yeah, we need a, so I'd be looking for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Terencey. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an item very dear to my heart. As everybody knows, the 2024 Utica Puppy Parade. I would be, this year, the tentative date, if approved, is April Saturday, April 27th, 2024, at 2:00 PM, same as it's been every year. Like last year, the event would begin at Grant Park and proceed to Pioneer Park. There would be vendor tents, many tents for animal advocacy groups, animal shelter groups, and so forth. I talked to the Genesee County Sheriff, Chris Swanson, who was a very popular guest last year. He says he's definitely on board again this year, and he's got a big surprise that he's saving, a big surprise announcement, and he's saving it for the Puppy Parade, so I have no idea what that is, but I'm excited to hear about it. So, yeah, very similar to last year. It seems to grow every year. I know our DPW superintendent's working on repairing the resident-named inflatable dog. The residents voted on Facebook, and his name is now officially Chief, as in Utica Chieftain. He got a little rip when we tried to give him an inaugural showing at the Halloween event. It was a little bit too windy, and we're gonna take him to a boat canvas shop, I think, in the next couple weeks to get him sewed up. So, yeah, it's a very popular event, grows every year. I'm looking forward to it, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve holding the 2024 Utica Puppy Parade on April 27th, 2024, at 2:00 PM.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Terencey. Any discussion from counsel?
No, it's always fun.
Certainly is. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is. Next on the agenda is an item to amend, an ordinance amendment to repeal, section 46-199. This was brought up by a resident during public comments. It's a bit of an archaic ordinance in our charter, which prohibits profanity, public profanity in front of women. We did some research on that and the state of Michigan also repealed all similar laws on the books. And Mr. O'Donnell, would you like me to hand this off to you? I believe you submitted this agenda item summary.
Yeah, I've got my AIS and the summary in there as I have reread it. I'm, what a cartoon character, but yeah, the, I I think you really nailed it, right? So the language itself is essentially the use of objectionable language in front of women and children. That's, you know, whether or not that is something you would do. Personally, I don't do such things. I don't think anybody should go to jail for it, so I am the one who submitted this. I don't think if a child curses in front of another child that they should go to juvie for it. If a woman curses in front of another woman, what do we do then? I I was greeted today, actually. The first word a woman said, I shook hands today. The first word was a piece of profanity, so.
She must have done it.
No, you're, to be fair, you're right. Yeah, so I just introduced this not to, I I mean, I write right in here. While possibly condemnable, the use of objectionable language ought not be a criminal offense. I think that's sort of the bottom line of what we're up to here.
Very good. So we would be looking for a motion to repeal the ordinance, section 46-199.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to allow people to.
I think maybe we give that honor to Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah, can I move to, I'm not going to make the silly comment that I think you're about to make. So I I move to, what would we do? Repeal ordinance?
Yeah, section 46-199.
Or adopt the amendment to repeal ordinance, 46-199. How about that?
Perfect.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Deion, with no comment. Any discussion from council?
I I have something to say. I'm old school and I am not opposed to keeping this on the books. Yes, the state of Michigan has done away with this, but we have become so disrespectful of each other, of government, of our public servants, of our children, that profanity has just become commonplace. And if your child is standing there, and I'm thinking of you two that have young children, mine are all grown, you know, and you're in line at Jimmy John's and somebody's mad because of the heat and he starts saying whatever he's saying, you know, how do you feel? And maybe, and Brad actually said to me this day, well, people shouldn't today, people shouldn't have to go to jail. And I'm thinking to myself, maybe if there was a consequence for being so disrespectful all the time, that we have become so disrespectful, we would go back to being nice to each other. People are no longer kind, they are no longer nice, they are no longer respectful. And when profanity becomes a common way of life, then there's something wrong with this picture. How are we raising our kids? What are we exposing our kids to? So and it may not be anyone here in this room, but in general, we all know what goes on. And the fact that we are saying, okay, let's make it, let's make it okay. We are condoning people being disrespectful to each other by approving this, so that's all. And I could really get on my soapbox, because I was on my soapbox all afternoon. And I even had, you guys will laugh, and I did too at myself. I had a picture of myself of the church lady on the old SNL skits. I said, oh, no, that's me. But I feel that I have to say this, because this is how I truly feel. We've become a world of disrespect.
I think we all appreciate your perspective, counsel and Trenzi, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Mayor Portem. I'm just going to say I'm also old school. Even though my kids are all grown, I have four grandchildren, okay? Now, to tell you the difference of the United States, what we've turned into versus my middle son with two of my grandchildren live in Japan, that it is a respectful, polite, neat, courteous society that we used to be 40 years ago. And because we allow everything to happen in this country and everybody justifies it and everybody's afraid to say, no, that's wrong, because we might step on your toes and your little feelings might get hurt, we have, we've turned ourselves into a mess. When I was in Japan two times ago and I flew back into Atlanta, and the first thing I said after being in that airport for five minutes, yes, we're back in the United States. And it was pitiful to listen to the way people talk, the way they, because they don't like something, they think they can blank somebody out, okay? So I'm I'm really old fashioned, so I'm going to, I know it's the way to to make it easy and don't do it, but I can't stand behind it, so.
And just because there's a law that says we can do this doesn't make it right.
I think there are many things that are legal that I don't agree with. I think, in fact, I mean, clowns, if I could make them illegal with a wave of my hand. But yeah, I just don't, I think it's not enforceable. I think it's a bad look to have it in our code of ordinances. End of thought.
Yeah, I think we've had some experiences here in the city of Utica in the last two years that have kind of guided the, guided us to the knowledge that the First Amendment basically reigns supreme, right? The freedom of expression, freedom of speech, that we have to honor those rights. Sometimes we hear things that are repulsive, disgusting, despicable, but that doesn't make them illegal. If we ask our police to go to Grant Park and enforce some random man, and it would only be a man based on the language of the ordinance, which is also sexist, you know, that would be, that would be a difficult thing in court as well. But if we asked our police to go enforce some random man using profanity in earshot of a woman or a child, what kind of a predicament are we putting our police in for for a situation like that, right? And then they're going to have to go to court and try to defend that. We're going to be putting our city attorney in a precarious situation. Basically, we're bound by the laws, the laws of the country, the laws of the state, and we have to to govern ourselves accordingly. In the last two years, I've seen some despicable stuff. If if anyone wants some examples, go look on our police department's Facebook page. Go look on my Facebook page. I'm posting about somebody that we all love very dearly that's going through a very serious health situation right now. And these First Amendment auditors are on there making very despicable posts, right? I can't delete it. Would I love to delete it? Absolutely. Some of the things that people, obviously they're not Utica residents, that have gone on to my Facebook, the city's Facebook, the police department's Facebook, and said about our city, about our police, about myself, they're hard. But the First Amendment has to reign supreme. And we have, as a governing organization, we have to respect the residents and the public's First Amendment rights. So yeah, it's democracy and liberty, they're not an easy thing sometimes. And this is one of those instances where it's not easy. As repulsive as some things are, as disgusting as it may be to, for somebody to swear in public, it can't be illegal. And there's no way to legally enforce if we did make it, if we kept it illegal. Mayor Portem, did you have something?
Again, it comes down to, we keep on accepting bad stuff. And no matter what happens, it's always, well, it's easier to look the other way. Or this is the way people talk now. It never had to get to that point, but everybody looked the other way. I look at more, if some guy is standing there and wants to just haul off and do a five-minute rant on a little five-year-old and a parent doesn't know what to do and you go to jail if you knock their teeth out, okay, to try to get them to stop, what do you do? That's his right. So this kid now is going to walk away and have been sworn at for five minutes? Maybe it's it's the wording that it's only against women and children. Maybe it should say that it's anybody that uses that language, so you take the sexism out of it. But like I say, we're just adding to the, let it be the easy way.
That's right.
Okay? And that that's, that's where this country is falling apart. Everything is the easy way or let this big part of a public put terms. They're not the majority, they're the minority, but everybody's afraid to do anything to them, okay? Just like the auditors, they're a minority and look what the hell, excuse me, they caused this.
Nope, we're going to arrest you.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're right next to a woman.
Get him, boys.
So I'm I'm just, you can play devil's advocate, you know, it's it's not modern, but maybe modern isn't the right way to be, so.
I think there's a bigger picture discussion that needs to be had, too. Is it the government's job to control our morals? Or is it, is it our police's job to control our morals? No, really, our police have to monitor our laws, right? Our family structures, our societal organizations, churches, schools. I mean, they're responsible for the mess that maybe our society is in, you know, according to you and council.
What rights does a parent have if this person is just going off, won't stop, he tried to be nice? It's a parent's job to raise their family under the morals they want, right? But like I say, heaven help you touch that person, you're the one going to jail. To protect their rights and yours just got trampled. And try to protect your children.
Would that be disorderly conduct, though? I mean, if you're unloading a tire.
Yes.
Holy moly.
So yeah, you have tumultuous conduct, disorderly conduct, disturbing peace. All those are avenues that a police officer can use if that person is truly disturbing someone's peace and quiet enjoyment or the tumultuous conduct or disorderly person. Those are all misdemeanors that are arrestable or citable. So if that person, regardless of whether they're using the seven words that the FCC doesn't allow us to use, if that person uses some sort of other profane or disgusting words that are shocking and terrible, the police have the ability to then take action. So the the word itself, I don't subscribe to bad words. I subscribe to bad actions, bad people. I use a lot of creative, colorful words around my friends. I mean, you know, but at the same time, sometimes it's an endearment, but not in public. I do try to be respectful of people like that. But at the same time, you know, we we can't regulate people's behavior through, you know, what they say a lot of time, but we can regulate their actions. So I think through these other tools we have, this is, this is a happy marriage, I think, making, you know, be able to use those other avenues of law enforcement rather than just subscribing to the words alone.
Any further discussion from council?
Our nation was founded upon the Bill of Rights. And though those those rights are what allow police officers to actually enforce actions, right? Okay, so we have our First Amendment protection that allows us to criticize our government, allows us to speak freely against our government, okay? So by the government taking action against that speech, that in itself is unconstitutional and it's unenforceable. We could make rules all we want about how citizens shouldn't have this or shouldn't have that. But if it boils down to that, that is a constitutionally protected right. It doesn't matter what laws we make up, it's still constitutionally protected, okay? We we heard it twice today as far as what officers swore to, including protecting the Constitution.
Correct. Great points. Call last chance, any further discussion? And just to be clear, a yes vote is to repeal that section 46-199, to remove the enforcement of profanity in public. Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
No.
Trenzi.
No.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, great discussion. Everybody's perspective is appreciated. That's why there's seven of us up here. We're not, we're not always going to have unanimous votes. In fact, I don't want us to always have unanimous votes. The public benefits when we have great deliberation like we did tonight, so thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is department reports, I'll kick it off. First, I want to thank our DPW. They've been very busy lately with a kind of an onslaught of water main breaks over the New Year's holiday. They had some serious issues going on with the Davis Street Lift Station. They had crews here over the whole holiday weekend, you know, making sure that our residents on, in that area, we're not getting flooded basements. I'm sure they all appreciated all your hard work. Thank goodness that the project to rehab the Davis Street Lift Station is right around the corner. I believe I've just signed all the contracts. I'm sure Superintendent Diamond's going to discuss that in in a little bit more depth later, but that project is scheduled to start soon, so please tell the guys that we appreciate all their hard work in keeping our residents safe and dry. I'd also like to mention that city offices are closed on Monday, January 15, in celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We also have a town hall, I'm scheduling a town hall meeting at 7:00 PM, which will precede the February 13 council meeting to discuss sidewalk, installation of sidewalks on Vanker and McClellan. This was another initiative brought up by a resident. We're working on getting some numbers together and we're going to invite the public to come and give us their opinions on that. So again, that'll be 7:00 PM, February 13, preceding the regular council meeting. I'd also like to extend our sadness to Officer Pecorelli. She has a brother who was killed in a tragic traffic accident recently. And we know this is a very difficult time for her, so we would just like to let her know that we care about her and we're thinking about her. As has been my custom every year in our January meeting, I'd like just to quickly read through some of the accomplishments that your city council, all my colleagues up here, we've been able to accomplish for the residents. It's been a very busy year, I'm very proud of the work we've all done. We redesigned the city website. If you haven't seen it, it's modern now, it's great, and it's actually useful, so that, very happy with that. We welcomed seven new patrol officers to the Utica Police Department. We were nominated a five-star community by the University of Michigan Dearborn Center for Innovation. We completed a traffic study of the Hall-Vandijk intersection. We adopted a new Airbnb ordinance, we purchased a new fire truck. We sold an unused city-owned parcel to a local business, which was a $60,000 benefit to the taxpayers. It also put that parcel on the tax books, so that revenue will be continuing in the future. We added three new swings at Grant Park. We purchased a new sculpture named Rusty the Pig by residents in downtown. If anybody's noticed, every holiday, he's been getting dressed. I think they just took his, whoever's doing it just took his Christmas costume off the other day. We hired a brand-new DPW superintendent who's doing a fantastic job, Mr. Bill Diamond. We reconstructed the Heritage Park kayak launch. We painted new speed limit messages on Canal and Utica Road. We dedicated Utica as a Purple Heart City, honoring veterans who were wounded in combat. Purchased a new hot patch, hot patcher to better maintain our roads. Purchased a complete new fleet of police patrol vehicles. Repaved the public parking lot at Cass and Summers. Amended the recreational vehicle and boat ordinance. Amended the exotic animals ordinance. Adopted the governmental fund balance reserve policy and capital improvement fund. Created a new annual event called Nightmare on Elb on Auburn, which was a huge success. And we had our annual Christmas tree lighting, which was also a huge success. We also welcomed a pretty long list of new businesses to Utica. Solair Heating and Cooling, Swift Services, Cicla Fashion Collection, A Slice of Rome Pizza, BRS Property Management, Inc., Realty Professionals, Spotted Nose Designs, Royal Beard, Pinoy Classics, Real Team Real Estate, Jewelry, Estate Jewelry and Loan, Jawbreakers, Strategic Wealth Advisors, Brick and Water Real Estate, Life in the Word Christian Church, A Special Touch Florist, which was new ownership, Elysian One, which was formerly On Deck, Hall Road Car Wash, which was formerly Eric's Car Wash, Cloud Utica, which is switching ownership, Northern Grind Coffee, switching ownership, Dairy Queen. And we also had some great remodels happen in the city, Dairy Queen, Dave and Buster's, and Value City. So a very busy year. Again, thank you to my colleagues on council, thank you. Thank you all to the department heads and employees in the city. Uh, we couldn't have gotten so much done without everybody contributing and all the support that I've gotten along the way. So thanks again.
Gus, you forgot Chief Klosny. We swore.
Did we hire you this year?
Yes.
Time flies. And of course, hiring Chief Klosny. Promoting Chief Klosny. Too cheap.
That was a lot of stuff. We lost.
That's great, yeah.
Lost my win. Is, are there any other comments from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, so, um, I was just reading earlier and today I had a conversation with the wife. Uh, she was talking about Brian Barcheck and said, um, state of health. Unfortunately, he's been enrolled in hospice care. And I know he's a real gem for the city. So, uh, if you get a chance, you know, maybe pay a visit to Reptarium. I know Brian's obviously not gonna be there, but any support for their business and upcoming venture to Legacy Aquarium is gonna be really useful for them. We could like to maybe continue to maintain his legacy and bring his dreams forward. I think as Utica's moving government body, I think that whatever we can do to continue the progress and make sure that comes to fruition, not only for Brian, but for our residents and for our visitors that's going to bring into the city. So, uh, he'll be sorely missed. I don't know, you know, timelines, obviously, it's in God's hands, but just wanted to bring it to people's attention if they didn't know.
Thank you. Yeah, I just met with some representatives from the Reptarium today to discuss the situation. And, uh, for those that are interested, Brian is in hospice. He's at home right now, uh, enjoying quiet time with his family and his close friends. Uh, the folks at Reptarium have their, the legacy project is going full steam ahead. Uh, they're making great progress. Some of the last enclosures are close to being delivered. Um, I don't wanna give out any dates, but the opening date is in the, very near in the future. So they're doing a great job. I know one of the kind of special things they're doing right now is selling commemorative plaques that you can, you know, buy and dedicate to whoever you want, to put your name on it, your family. I know my family, we just purchased one. They have different levels, uh, of sponsorship, and those plaques will be like a permanent fixture at the new Legacy Aquarium. So, uh, but if you visit their website, there's a few other campaigns that they're running as well. That commemorative plaque thing is kind of a one-time-only deal, obviously, because they're, you know, they're planning for their grand opening. So if anybody's interested in that, definitely go to their website and look at that. Uh, I know, Councilman O'Donnell, you have something to report, and there's also an AIS for it, if you'd like to take over.
Yes. Uh, first thing, actually, Gus, is your birthday the twenty-third?
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Um, also, hey, there was that noise ordinance by the Salvation Army. Was that Salvation Army? The, uh, over by Home Depot, um, behind them. Did we ever do anything with that? Did we ever? They said there were a lot of loud trucks. I haven't heard from them.
Garbage trucks.
Garbage trucks, yeah. I, I.
Uh, our police chief has been working with some of the residents at Stonefield Village. We haven't gotten any complaints recently.
Okay.
It's been, how long, chief? Maybe six months or so since we had complaints?
Probably at least, yeah. Um, to my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints, and our officers have been pretty good about going back there and speaking with the semi-trucks and stuff. So, yeah, we haven't, I haven't received anything from any residents.
Gotcha. I just, I put a reminder on my calendar. I promised them I would, so I'm following up.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Um, what else you got? Noise ordinance, happy birthday. So, if I may take sixty seconds, I found myself in this sort of privileged position to be a public figure in which I can comment on other public figures. Like I said, sixty seconds. Here's a quote for you, uh, that I kind of live by, or not live by, but sort of believe. Every man has two deaths when he is buried in the ground and the last time someone says his name. Ernest Hemingway. I like that, right? Sort of the idea that your legacy can live on, uh, long after your death. So I want to mention, um, and the reason it's taken me so long to get this on the agenda is because I can already hear myself breaking up a little bit. I am, uh, I don't cry. So, uh, Samantha Wool was the president of the Isaac Agri Downtown Synagogue in Detroit. Uh, she was the founder of the Muslim Jewish Forum of Detroit, uh, whose goal is to bring understanding and cooperation between those two faiths. Um, Samantha Wool and I were, I put it, because I'm standoffish. Samantha Wool and I were friends. Uh, but, you know, Sam made everyone feel like they were best friends. Sam made everyone feel comfortable and loved and understood. Um, she was warm, passionate, and was driven to bring people together and, and interfaith strife. Um, her accomplishments by age forty are enough to make anyone proud. Sam, uh, Sam was easily the nicest person I had ever known, easily. Uh, she never had a negative word to say about anyone ever, and I tried to get, occasionally, I would try to get her to say something negative, and she said, Brad, no. Um, her tragic death at only age forty has been devastating to her community and to all of us. And maybe in one hundred years, someone will be reviewing city council agendas, and they will read the name Samantha Wool, and she will be immortal for that much longer. So, thank you, everybody.
Sorry for your loss, your friend, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, pork chop.
On a much lighter note.
Please.
I would like to say four words. Go Blue and go Lions.
For sure. Any other, uh, reports from council? Tonight, we have nothing from planning, assessing, or building. Ms. Francis, library?
Nothing much, just wanna let everybody know, um, we have, uh, we have blood drives at the library once a month. Um, I was just notified recently that, uh, there is a blood shortage. So anybody that would like to donate blood, um, our blood drive is Thursday. It's not ours. We don't take appointments, so please don't contact the library. But, um, there's a link that, uh, Mayor Gus shared, and then the library shared as well, so you can go on there if you'd rather. Um, but I think there is a contest that if you give blood in the month of January, you can enter in to win a trip to two for the Super Bowl.
For the Super Bowl?
Yeah. Super Bowl to Vegas. So, you know, it could be a win-win, right? Um, but yeah, that was, that's it, so.
Do you know the hours? You said Thursday?
The hours they're gonna be at the library is gonna be eleven to five, I believe. So, and there are several time slots open. I know that. I checked today.
And there's a link on my Facebook page and also the library shared it. There's a link in the post. Um, when I signed up a few days ago, there were only a couple of appointments. I think mine's at four PM, so there's a whole.
Yep.
I think every fifteen minutes or so, they have an appointment, so there was a whole bunch available.
And walk-ins are okay?
No, they only do appointments. Yeah.
I think it said walk-ins are okay, but I would recommend, go to the link and check. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Go to the link and check.
I've walked in to ours, and they've sent me home.
Oh, I think I tried to walk in last time, and they sent me home, if I'm not mistaken. Or sent me here, back here, actually.
I think they will, I think they will accept it if they have someone there. If there's an, if they don't have someone in that time slot, then I think they would. But it's, it's a gamble, so I would make an appointment.
Thank you.
Anything else to report?
Nope, that is all.
Thank you so much. Assistant Chief Plant, a report from fire, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a single item today. We had a, uh, out-of-service condition, a no-start condition on one of our ambulances. Sent it in for repair. Required heavy engine work, so we sent it out, uh, looking for a motion to simply pay the bill. The amount is three thousand seven hundred one dollars and eighty cents. Uh, that would be paid out of the ambulance repair service line item payable to mechanic services of Shelby Township.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries.
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you, sir. Chief Klosny, our new hire for the year.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, council, before I get started with my AIS, um, I'd just like to kind of piggyback on what the mayor said regarding Officer Pecorelli. Um, on behalf of myself and our officers, our hearts really break for Officer Pecorelli. Her family is a deal with this, this tough time, with the tragic loss of her brother and stuff. So I just, just like to, you know, publicly say that as, as we really, you know, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is the family element that we have at our department and knowing each person. So really, this has affected, obviously, not only Tiffany's family, but every member of the department. So, very, very tough times, and we really hope and pray that Tiffany can find the strength that she gets through this. Mayor, council, the AIS that I have in front of you, um, this is, this is regarding our handgun upgrade that we had performed. And back in April, I'd actually presented this AIS and received approval for it. Uh, due to the, the shipping and how things had gotten sent down and how we had received everything, it has passed the fiscal year twenty-three budget. So what I'm looking for is amend my fiscal year twenty-four budget, so we can go ahead and pay the, uh, pay the final bill to CMP. And that's a total cost of, uh, after selling back the firearms that we had out of our, uh, property room, total cost of fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents. So I'd be looking for a motion to request a budget amendment to police department's fiscal year twenty-four budget revenue sale fixed assets, one oh one, three oh one, six nine three, triple zero, by three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, and our drug forfeitures account, two sixty-five, zero zero zero, six fifty-eight, zero three one, by fifty-four thousand dollars, fifty-four hundred dollars.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Trenzi, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
I think I have maybe a silly question. I mean, the calendar year ended, but the fiscal year didn't. I mean, am I missing something?
The, the, this went back to fiscal year twenty-three. So because, because it was in April of twenty-three, and we started in July one for twenty-four.
Okay.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Very good.
It's the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay. Very good.
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson. Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, second motion I had is to request to amend the expenditure equipment purchase GL, and that's one oh one, three oh one, nine eight one, triple zero, by eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And the drug enforcement fund, two sixty-five, three oh one, nine eight one, triple zero, by ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzi, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson. Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Some things to notes from the police department is, you probably started seeing our new police tajos are starting to patrol the streets. We actually received our second vehicle back from the outfitters, so it's kind of a slow process because we're, we have to transition one vehicle into the new vehicle. We can't just go ahead and get multiple done at a time because we're transferring equipment over. So I want to let the, uh, the public and council and mayor know that you'll start seeing the, the new vehicles out there on the road, and I've received nothing but compliments from, from our officers and stuff. And I think, you know, if you haven't had a chance to see them during the parking lot, I think they really look sharp out there and stuff, so they, they really did a nice job. Next thing I, I want to add, I just wanted to, um, from last council meeting, I had an AIS to upgrade our, our department booking system, and that was RSI Security out of our meeting. I would like to just take a moment just to publicly thank them. The owner is extremely appreciative of law enforcement, and he did the job just based on, on the total, you know, equipment costs. He included all the labor and stuff, so we really received a tremendous benefit for the taxpayers. He was out within probably about three or four days of letting them know that I got approval of the project, and he actually threw in a, we have a sixty-inch TV that our dispatchers are able to, to monitor. Preserves that wasn't included in my initial quote.
Wow.
I would just like to publicly thank him because on behalf of the police department and really the taxpayers of the city, he really did a tremendous job.
Name one more time?
It's RSI Security and they're out of our meter.
Okay. All right.
One of the other items I have, uh, last council meeting, I discussed possibility, or I'd received approval, to sell one of our vehicles and one of the old department vehicles. And speaking with the, the fire department, they were originally thinking about possibly taking two of our old vehicles, and they've decided they're just gonna take one of the vehicles. So I just want to notify you that we're gonna be looking to sell that, that second patrol vehicle and at least recoup that cost back to the city. Uh, last thing I have here, uh, yesterday, our two new police recruits, Reece Stewart and Cameron Smouse, started the police academy. Um, I've received good reports so far off of, off of day one and half of day two. Uh, Reece Stewart actually is, uh, was selected to be the squad leader for her platoon, so that's, that's a good honor and stuff. So we're looking forward to having them get through the police academy, bring them in front of council to form a swearman, and get them onto the road to go ahead and patrol and protect the citizens of Utica.
Great stuff, chief.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year to you. Uh, while I have no AIS, I do have, um, I'm gonna be a little winded because I have a report for all our projects going on, just to keep everybody up to date. Um, start with our two thousand twenty-three sewer rehab program. Uh, the start of construction will be in February, March of two thousand twenty-four, with the contract completion date is, uh, August thirtieth of this year. So, uh, we have, we have that going. That's gonna be great. Um, our aforementioned Davis Street Pump, uh, Station Rehab, the mayor did sign all the contracts. The start of that is looking to be, uh, March and April of this year, and that completion needs to be done in November. Um, we did have issues again with the station, uh, and it is, it was again clogged. So, um, it was much difficult, uh, much more difficult this time. I did have, um, it's called, we had five guys come in on New Year's Day. They were here for about six hours, and then I had two more come in, um, on, um, January second, which was also their union holiday. Um, so overtime's gonna be up a little bit for DPW for January, but all good things. We didn't get any complaints about backup sewers, and we did get it rectified, um, on our own, didn't have to take it out. So luckily, we were able to, uh, um, rehab the pump and clear the lines, so knock on wood. I have a feeling, obviously, it was the holidays, a lot more people in the city, the system couldn't catch up. But again, I, flushable wipes are not flushable. I'll repeat that. Flushable wipes are not flushable. I am working on a flyer to give to the mayor to approve and to get this out to our residents, either with our water bills or, um, we're gonna walk it door-to-door if need be. And we're gonna start with, uh, the area of Davis Lift Station to get everyone who's, would be affected by that one. So that's, that'll be coming to your desk, Mayor, soon. Um, we have Utica Bridge inspections. Um, they are completed for the year, and they are reported to MDOT, and those begin again in two thousand four. HRC, our engineering firm, does handle that. Um, they just let us know if there's any issues, and we move forward so far. Um, so far, we're so good. Uh, our bridge is okay. We do have some topical things that need to be worked on, and I did contact, um, uh, MDOT for those. Um, if you see some of the sidewalks and curbs on the bridges are falling apart, so hopefully we'll get that. Luckily, it's not a structural thing. Uh, the lead and galvanized water service replacement program, we have started. I'm sure some of you know that we've done a couple of your houses, but we have started, um, doing our point inspections that are required from Eagle. Uh, it's a three-point inspection. Before I got here, all the interiors were done. Eagle, which is the state, they'll, they, um, they randomly selected through their, their magic hat, three hundred and sixty-four addresses in our city. DPW did get inside all three hundred and sixty-four of the houses that were, um, uh, on our, that were randomly selected to see if they were copper, uh, lead, galvanized, vinyl, whatever was inside. And we had to, these are the ones that we will be replacing. So we had two hundred and fifty-two out of those three sixty-four that we had to verify at the curb stop, which is where we turn your water on and off at your house. So usually, it's located in the front of your lawn, maybe in the sidewalk. Um, and as of, we just started two weeks ago, and we have forty-three completed, so we've been moving along. Um, of those, six of those are galvanized. Um, one house, one was demoed, so it was cut and capped, and thirty-six have been copper. So we are moving along, um, so that's good news. The original end date for this program was supposed to be January first, two thousand twenty-five, but the state kindly. be January 1, 2025, but the state kindly shortened that goal to October 16, 2024. So luckily, we are moving, we're probably going to be stopping for a while, but we're going, they're going well. And we are giving, we are hand-delivering letters to the residents that we will be in their front lawn, so they know we'll be digging up. You know, they've been doing pretty well of restoring. We might have to come back and fix some cement or seed some lawns, but so far, no complaints have been going on. So the residents have been being notified. We try to get them at least a week in advance, two weeks in advance, that we're going to be there. So that's been going very smoothly. The lead replacements that are state-required are going to be starting in the spring of this year, and that is by DeAngelo Brothers Construction. They'll start with the ones that were already, out of the 364 that were already alvanized for our lead. So they have a fair amount to start with before they need to get to our numbers. We have three projects that are going to be bid out together. Hopefully, these will be out in January for the bid. That's the Shaner North Point sidewalk extension, the North Point pavement repairs, and the Van Dyke median island. North Point, the plans are completed, so we're just waiting for the bidding to happen. And then the North Point pavement repairs and the Van Dyke median, HRC are nearing completion for those design plans. So they'll be bundled together. They're small projects, and we tried doing a few of them by themselves, and it's just too small of a project for someone to take on to be able to devote their time. So altogether, we should get a decent amount of bids, knock on wood. We have the Pioneer Park Pavilion that HRC is designing and scoping, and we should have a review meeting soon, considering that. We did get funds that started to come for that, so we have the area. We had it staked out. So this is good news. Hoping maybe before the Puppy Parade, but I'm not sure if that'll be done. That's, to me, Davis Lift Station is number one. I'd like to get them in right away. But yeah, our goal is to try to get this done before the Puppy Parade. The Davis Street pedestrian bridge, the design is going to start, going to commence when we get the final budgeting on that. So, and then we have a few review sites for our right-of-way utilities that are always ongoing. So those are lists of the projects we have going, so we are pretty busy with those. Like I said, a little winded, so a couple other things. Implementing, we, years ago, I believe this, we're on our third years, we, a Silver Smith GIS system was purchased, and it sat in an office collecting dust, not implemented. Found that, found all the paperwork. We actually had hands-on training for this, and we started using it with our lead service lines. So we will hopefully, within a year, year and a half, have everything, meaning our curb stops, our water mains, our sanitary, our storms.
Hydrants.
Hydrants, yep. Well, we should have all of that on our GIS system. I sent an email to both police and fire that they'll be able to use this as well. And depending on how far we want to take it, if we want to buy more rights for them to add on it, but they can use it as a visual thing, especially for hydrants, they'll be able to, you know, let me know, and I can add notes as needed. You can use it for our events, you know, where we put blocked streets and stuff like that. So it's a very, very useful event. The gentleman who sold it a couple of years ago happened to come into the station, and I happened to be there when he came, and within a week, we had the training. So it's going to be a good tool for us, especially moving forward. I already have, Macomb County sent their parcel and address over to Silver Smith to add on. And then I had HRC send what they had in their shape files for our ASBILs for their water mains and sewers when they did the sewer lining project. So we'll have a good jumpstart. The hydrants, the curb boxes, those things will take some time, but we have a good start. Working with the mayor on the county 50/50 match program, we have, this is for the Macomb Interceptor Drain that runs down Hawn. We have a couple of locations that we noted that we sent to Macomb County to have them come look at, to see if this is something that obviously is 50/50, if we can do our part. The three locations are along Hawn. We have Hawn and Van Dyke. If you can tell, it's slowly, from what I tell, from our older, wiser, more experienced DPW employees can tell, you know, it told me, you can tell, it's slowly, that intersection of Van Dyke and Hawn is slowly, slowly sinking. There's an area where we had the water main break, right behind AT&amp;T. There's a spot, and then there's a spot on Hawn and Deshaun that also was noted, it was noted that it was broke during the repaving project, but was told, I was told that funds weren't there at that time, so we're looking into that. Then also, along Utica Park, where the drain is, there's the, the drain itself is clogged by cattails debris, so the flow is very slow. So those four things are on our radar. Spoke about the Davis Lift Station. I had a meeting with DTE. They're looking to do an LED conversion for our city lights. They're going to, they're, get a quote, and we're going to have a meeting with the mayor, something to help us save money. Right now, they are going to be converting all city lights, all the ones that are theirs, to LEDs. But right now, they're going to keep replacing the ones they need with ones in stock, the non-LED. But if we jump and want to start this process sooner, it'll be a lot cheaper for us at the get-go to get them all converted, and then our DT bills will start to decrease with these LED lights. So that's good news. So I'm waiting on an email for that. Christmas, as you see, the Christmas lights, everything started being removed. Once the company comes in and takes down our fancy Auburn and Cass lights, then we'll get our re-stone, and we'll have that done for the year. We just have to get the tree. We are ready for snow if it comes. I prefer it doesn't, but if it does, we are ready. All our equipment is ready to go. Have a meeting this week with GLEWA about our fiscal 25 service charge schedule that takes effect in August. So whether the numbers go up or down, that starts in our August billing. And the last thing I have, I had the opportunity, I talked with the mayor about hosting a confined space program for our DPW employees, and A-line staffing is allowing us to use their conference room free of charge. So we are going to be hosting for the Michigan Rural Water Association, which I believe it was October that you approved the agreement to become a member again. So we are going to be hosting that. We get a great deal on getting all our guys in on that, and then other communities will have a chance to. So we'll have at least 25 other DPW employees in the city, and that is January 31st, and that'll be an eight-to-four thing. That's it, unless you have any questions.
Good stuff. Any questions for Mr. Diamond?
Thank you.
Thank you. Two-day-at-the-hot-dog place isn't going to be open yet. Wander over.
I don't believe we have a report from Treasurer. Madam Clerk, City Administration?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, I'd first like to welcome Becky Livernoy. She joined the Clerk's Office officially in November, and she's here tonight to learn about the goings on of our meeting. But she's been great so far in the office. She's making lots of friends with the residents, and she's just a really good asset. So I would like to welcome her. We do have a presidential primary election on February 27th. We have consolidated the whole city to one precinct now that the laws have changed, and I'm able to do that since we're smaller. So we have one polling location will be at Flickinger Elementary. With the new laws that went into effect, there's nine days of early voting. We have combined with Sterling Heights for those nine days of early voting, so our residents will be able to vote at their election center on Dodge Park for those nine days of early voting. But Election Day will still be at Flickinger, just like always. That's all I have.
Excuse me, you said that was February 27th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Madam Clerk?
Will we go, so then, would it go for the general election? Would it be back to the broken-up precincts? Or are we saying, hey, it's Flickinger now?
No, I consolidated us just to one precinct, and we're going to be at Flickinger for the foreseeable future.
Okay, just confirming.
Yep.
Thank you. What date was that?
February 27.
I should know. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm an elected official, I should know when elections are.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Parks and Rec, anything to report tonight? Nothing from the Historic District Commission. Madam Attorney, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
No news of our former city attorney?
Oh, but that's not really under our legal. Yeah, some of you may have heard that my brother is leaving his position at the 41 B District Court. He's been appointed as Regional Director overseeing all the courts, first State Court Administrator's Office in Macomb County, Oakland County, St. Clair County, and Lapeer County.
Wow.
It's just obvious that his time here in Utica prepared him for that. So, just a great job.
Good for him.
All right. At this time, we open up the floor to the public for any items that are not listed on the agenda. Everyone will be awarded three minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address council? Mr. Barney?
I do have a handout. Thank you.
I'm not counting this as your time.
Thank you. Box around it.
Gary Barney, 45149 Cass Avenue. That's my address. I promise I'll be brief today, and I won't use any objectional language. So I'm kind of here as a last resort. I've been a resident of Utica for nine years. My, I'm having problems with getting to my own driveway, right? So my driveway is only accessible from the alley located between Brunel and Cass Avenue. Again, this is kind of last resort. I don't want to take up your time any more than I need to. But the traffic there, the people not paying attention to signage, no parking, it's really kind of a debacle. There's times people are going the wrong way down the alley, forcing oncoming traffic to reverse onto Cass Avenue. I could go on and on. The pictures in the pack could kind of explain it. Along with that, there's been, what I've noticed in the past year, a substantial increase in trash and debris overflowing from dumpsters, over full dumpsters being emptied and thus, you know, dropping trash in the alley. It's really just kind of an embarrassment for the city, from my opinion. If you have people coming from out of town, you know, in seeing this, it's just not clean. It's dirty. And, you know, obviously, I live right there, so I see this on a daily basis. But you would probably be surprised the amount of both pedestrian and bicycle traffic during the warm months of the year. You know, I see potential hazards. It's just dangerous, and simply, people just don't care. So I would just ask the city and council to, you know, take a look, you know, digest this. I'm obviously, I'm here with any questions, comments. You know, I would just propose, maybe in the very beginning, you know, maybe just increasing some signage, maybe getting a hold of these business owners, you know, enforcement. I'll leave it to you at that, you know. So I would just ask the city to kind of look into this issue and help me out there.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I also have some questions.
Well, I won't start your clock either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Heather Zalinski. I'm actually a Warren resident, so 26239 Wexford Drive in Warren. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Autism Society of Greater Detroit. I wanted to be able to take a minute just to introduce myself and our organization to both the city as well as its council. About eight years ago, there was a handful of organizations in Michigan that represented the national organization that was known as the Autism Society of America. Those small groups all closed about eight years ago, providing no resources for the autistic community in Michigan. The Autism Society of America underwent some changes. They decided to come out with a model that allows one representative, one affiliate for each state. The Autism Society of Greater Detroit is that organization for the state of Michigan. We are completely volunteer-led, a 501(c)(3). We're currently servicing members in Macomb, Oakland, Wayne, St. Clair, and Washtenaw Counties. With the support of our parent organizations and our community, though, we're looking to be able to grow that reach, to be able to support the autistic community in all of Michigan. So we're looking at about five years for that. Our main purpose is to be able to connect between community service organizations, state services, and those affected by autism or other neurodiverse issues. We offer resources 24/7 through both our website, as well as a resource phone line that you can always call. We do also hold events like Resource Expos, trainings for professionals that serve the autistic community. We have adult social meetups, vaccine clinics for those that are overwhelmed with traditional medical settings, as well as parent-peer support groups, and we're always looking for new ways to serve. As we help the community find and connect them with resources that are available, sometimes we're able to identify gaps in services that aren't currently provided. And then we would go and write grants and be able to find ways to partner with our community members to serve that part of the community. Our next event is January 29th. We are holding a Resource Expo. I can make sure to get you guys information on that, but it's also on our website, which is autismsocietyofgreaterdetroit.org. You can also always find us on Facebook. And I just look forward to being able to reach you guys and assist with any events that you guys might be holding, finding ways to make those events attainable for people with PTSD, autism, neurodiversity issues, sensory issues, anything like that. I'd like to be able to work with you guys to be able to bridge that gap. That's all for me.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to council?
Sorry, I don't have any more to give you guys.
If you could state your name and address, please.
Lori Schmidt, 45866 Kensington. I just want to piggyback on what Councilman Deion said about the rectorium. I had the privilege of going this weekend. Took my grandkids. It was one of their Christmas presents, was to take them to the rectorium. And it was just, I mean, they had a blast, we had a blast. It was so fun. And I really do encourage people to go. My three-year-old granddaughter didn't want to touch any snakes until she saw the big giant yellow one, and she thought it was pretty. So she wanted to touch it. So it was, it was just, it was really fun. And I really do encourage people to go. It was, it was outstanding, the way they do it, and take the, take all the animals out. You just tell them, oh, I want to touch this one. And they're like, okay. And they bring it out. And it's just, it's just really fun. And I do encourage people to go. I even held a snake. I said I was doing it for Brian's honor. So.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? It appears that's all we have tonight. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Turenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson, Mayor Calendrito.
Yes, we are.